Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 17, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Four members of the public are able to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now just past 10:20 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But as is customary, this being Friday, we do have a number of special presentations and recognition ceremonies scheduled. If I can ask you all for your attention, please. There's a lot of chatter back here. Why don't we begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garzanas?
Shhh. We're about to honor a librarian. First, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on Judith and how she came to the San Fernando Valley and how she became one of our best librarians this city has ever had. And by way of background, Judith was born in New York City, and she has a very nice demeanor, always has, right Judith?
Oh, yeah.
She fit really well in California. Her family moved to the San Fernando Valley before Judith was two years old. When the family got ready to move to California, they were scheduled to come on a DC-6, but it broke down, and then they ended up having to take two DC-3s between the family, and it took them to go 400 miles a day, and it took them 24 hours because they had to keep refueling. But they made it. They were determined. The family bought their first home on Laurel Grove, right across the street from Strathen Street Elementary School, right there in Sun Valley, and Judith attended her first five years at that school. Judith loves handicrafts, and she learned how to knit and croquet during her high school years, and later she took up quilting and became a member of the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association, which is still a member of that association today. Her other leisure fun activity she likes to do is cooking and going to the theater. She currently holds four or five season subscriptions and regularly attends productions at the Griffith Playhouse Music Center and the NoHo District. Judith's other major leisure pursuits are horseback riding. Within her first few months of working for the L.A. Public Library, she bought two things. She bought a car and bought a horse. The horse worked out much better than the car. Books have always been her passion. Judith loves to read to children and teach children how to read. She recognizes that this is very important for many skills that they're going to learn in life and for their success in education. And as we all know, education is the backbone of people's success in today's society, and she's been nurturing children in that community for many, many years. And with that, I want to give Judith a couple of minutes to say a few words and for us to show our appreciation. We have a certificate of recognition for Judith. Judith?
First of all, I'd like to say that it's not your mother's library anymore. Nowadays, if we try to shush the kids like that, the parents beat us up. Libraries have changed, but it's still a place of learning. It's a place where someone can better themselves, get educated, learn computer skills. I cannot conceive of anything in the world that I could have done that I would have enjoyed more. Libraries are even better for me than schools in some respect, other than colleges, because the kids don't have to be there. They come because they want to, and that is such a joy. And my body has sort of taken a beating over the past 37 years, so I don't want to work full-time anymore, but I'm really hoping I can come back and sub for the library because I don't think I'm ever going to get it out of my blood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, Judith, we'd like to give you this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and it basically commemorates all of the work that you've done for us in our wonderful city libraries, and also recognizes the fact that you've been with us since 1968, and I have a strong feeling that you're going to be with us for a long, long time, and you are going to be able to sub for us and still teach the children and give your wonderful, wonderful work and your passion to what you love to do, which is to work in our libraries. So congratulations. God bless you, and we look forward to working with you, even though you're retiring. Thank you. Good morning. Today, we're going to be recognizing the Chicana Chicano Studies Department at UCLA. Many people don't realize it, but in order to have a department at a university, it's very, very difficult. And even though it was recognized that Chicano Studies classes were given in the early 1970s, this department didn't become a full-fledged department until 1993. Almost 20 years later, the struggle continued for this very important teaching to take place and to be recognized as a full-fledged partner and member of our university.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 17th, 2005. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Four members of the public are able to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now just past 10:20 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But as is customary, this being Friday, we do have a number of special presentations and recognition ceremonies scheduled. If I can ask you all for your attention, please. There's a lot of chatter back here. I want to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Cardenas.
We're about to honor a librarian. First, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on Judith and how she came to the San Fernando Valley and how she became one of our best librarians this city has ever had. And by way of background, Judith was born in New York City, and she has a very nice demeanor, always has, right Judith?
Oh, yeah.
She fit really well in California. Her family moved to the San Fernando Valley before Judith was two years old. When the family got ready to move to California, they were scheduled to come on a DC-6, but it broke down, and then they ended up having to take two DC-3s between the family, and it took for them to go 400 miles a day, and it took them 24 hours because they had to keep refueling. But they made it. They were determined. The family bought their first home on Laurel Grove, right across the street from Strathen Street Elementary School, right there in Sun Valley, and Judith attended her first five years at that school. Judith loves handicrafts, and she learned how to knit and to croquet during her high school years. And later, she took up quilting and became a member of the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association, which is still a member of that association today. Her other leisure fun activity she likes to do is cooking and going to the theater. She currently holds four or five season subscriptions and regularly attends productions at the Griffith Playhouse Music Center and the NoHo District. Judith's other major leisure pursuits are horseback riding. Within her first few months of working for the L.A. Public Library, she bought two things: she bought a car and bought a horse. The horse worked out much better than the car. Books have always been her passion. Judith loves to read to children and teach children how to read. She recognizes that this is very important for many skills that they're going to learn in life and for their success in education. And as we all know, education is the backbone of people's success in today's society, and she's been nurturing children in that community for many, many years. And with that, I want to give Judith a couple of minutes to say a few words and for us to show our appreciation. We have a certificate of recognition for Judith. Judith?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that it's not your mother's library anymore. Nowadays, if we try to shush the kids like that, the parents beat us up. Libraries have changed, but it's still a place of learning. It's a place where someone can better themselves, get educated, learn computer skills. I cannot conceive of anything in the world that I could have done that I would have enjoyed more. Libraries are even better for me than schools in some respect, other than colleges, because the kids don't have to be there. They come because they want to, and that is such a joy. And my body has sort of taken a beating over the past 37 years, so I don't want to work full-time anymore, but I'm really hoping I can come back and sub for the library because I don't think I'm ever going to get it out of my blood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, Judith, we'd like to give you this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and it basically commemorates all of the work that you've done for us in our wonderful city libraries and also recognizes the fact that you've been with us since 1968, and I have a strong feeling that you're going to be with us for a long, long time, and you are going to be able to sub for us and still teach the children and give your wonderful, wonderful work and your passion to what you love to do, which is to work in our libraries. So congratulations. God bless you, and we look forward to working with you, even though you're retiring. Thank you. Congratulations. Today, we're going to be recognizing the Chicana/Chicano Studies Department at UCLA. Many people don't realize it, but in order to have a department at a university, it's very, very difficult. And even though it was recognized that Chicano Studies classes were given in the early 1970s, this department didn't become a full-fledged department until 1993. Almost 20 years later, the struggle continued for this very important teaching to take place and to be recognized as a full-fledged partner and member of our university, our prestigious university right here in Los Angeles, the University of California of Los Angeles. The reason why I think it's important for us to recognize the Chicana and Chicano Studies Department is because it's very important that we understand that universities are a place of learning. Universities are a place where we teach our young people so they can grow into responsible adults and move out into the world and take on those full-time jobs and to teach and to grow themselves. But if somebody does so with ignorance and somebody does that without understanding the communities and the diversity of our great country, it would be a shame and almost a crime, I would say, if we allow ourselves to do that. And that's why we have departments like Black Studies, Asian Pacific Islander Studies, Chicano Studies at some, not all, but at some of our universities. I think it's very important that we recognize the University of California, Los Angeles, for finally recognizing and giving that full-fledged opportunity to the Chicana and Chicano Studies Department over at UCLA. Today, we're commemorating an anniversary, but more important than an anniversary, we need to recognize that they have educated and allowed that university to disseminate the truth and to quell the ignorance about the Latino community in this country and the wonderful contributions that have been given. There are very few people in this country that have ever risen to the point where we actually have holidays in their name. This Chicana/Chicano Studies Department is named after Cesar E. Chavez. Cesar Chavez was a farm worker. Cesar Chavez was an American. Cesar Chavez was a world-renowned leader. Cesar Chavez was a Latino, a Chicano. And that is why the department is so important, so that our young people, Chicanos and non-Chicanos, can recognize the fact that many communities contribute to how wonderful this country is. And there are many individuals, but few attain the point in life where they can be recognized like Cesar Chavez. So Cesar Chavez is a point of pride for many of us in this country. Cesar Chavez is somebody who was recognized as a leader for working men and women around the world, and certainly here in California for our farmworkers. And I think it's only fitting that here in the city of Los Angeles that we recognize this department on their anniversary and also give them an opportunity to explain to all of us Angelinos why they're here, why it's so important, and why they're going to stay. Doctor?
Council President Padilla, Councilman Cardenas, honorable members of the City Council, thank you very much for not only this recognition, but also for this brief opportunity to speak. I'd just like to share with you a little bit more information regarding the history of Chicana/Chicano Studies at UCLA and some of the importance to the community in particular with regards to departmentalization this year. As many of you might know, Chicana/Chicano Studies started in the late '60s, early '70s with several broad goals: to reformulate old knowledge about Chicanos, to create new knowledge about Chicanos, to apply that research that is done in Chicano Studies to change the material conditions of the Chicano community and to support the cultural renaissance of that community that was taking place during that time. In the 1980s, the development of Chicana Studies added several other goals to it, including putting gender as a central construct in the study and the scholarship of Chicanos and Chicanas, to challenge patriarchy in particular within the community and within the scholarship, and also to support the dreams and aspirations of Chicanas. At UCLA, the form of the development of Chicana/Chicano Studies took place with a research center in 1969, an academic major in 1974. In the 1980s, with budget problems and other kinds of things, the program had very few majors, very few classes, and the academic senate froze admissions into the program, almost closing it down. The program had basically $15,000 operating funds for all of its support and was limping, if you will. In the early 1990s, the faculty and the students said, "This can't be done, not at a major university, not in Los Angeles, it has the largest number of Chicanos and Latinos in the world, except for Mexico City." It needed to be fixed. They established a minor, created introductory courses, developed a new structure to the program, asked for more resources in the form of a department in 1992, that was rejected by the university, asked for a department again in 1993, that was rejected by the university. It took students, two community members, and a faculty member to go on a two-week hunger strike that captured the attention of the university, of Los Angeles and the Southern California community, and of the entire state for two weeks of suffering, of hunger, of striking, of negotiating in order to get a department. The compromise was the establishment of a center for interdisciplinary instruction that was like a department that would have six faculty but otherwise did not have departmental status. The growth of those resources since then, in the last 12 years, has been dramatic. From 21 courses, we've gone to 60. From 700 student enrollments in those courses in 1993, we had over 2,500 student enrollments this year. From 71 majors and minors in 1993, we've gone to over 300 majors and minors this year. 33 graduates in 1993, over 153 graduates this month, our largest graduating class in Chicana/Chicano Studies. No full-time faculty in this program. We now have 10 full-time faculty in Chicana/Chicano Studies, six joint appointments, 15 affiliated faculty, and six visiting faculty. Of those 10 full-time, eight are tenured. Our students are bilingual, are biliterate, they're critical thinkers, and they're scholar activists, balancing service with their academic work. They focus on L.A. in the major. The major has a requirement of service learning, where we build community, working with community partners that are community-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, labor organizations, unions, and hometown associations, to help students understand that the community is involved in changing its own conditions, in seeking social change and in seeking social justice. Your recognition today is important to us in part because of this partnership that we have with the community. Where Chicana/Chicano Studies is distinguished from other academic disciplines is its focus on the community, is its development and creation, partly because of the motivation and the work and the struggle for social change and social justice in the Chicano movement and since then. During the hunger strike that lasted two weeks in 1993, over 2,000 people marched from La Placita to UCLA in support of departmentalization. That commitment of community, of university faculty, students, and other stakeholders in Chicana/Chicano Studies is reflected here today in this recognition, and we'd like to thank you for that. It's a recognition that is collective. We have had faculty, staff, and students, some of whom are with me here today, and I'd like you to stand and be recognized. And we take it very seriously. There's still a lot to do, obviously, in higher education for Chicanos and Latinos, both in admissions, faculty, as well as staff, but this is one achievement and a struggle that will continue, and we thank you very much for your recognition of the social change and the social justice that is taking place in our universities. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's very important to note and give thanks to our university over at UCLA for finally giving an opportunity for these professors to be tenured. How many professors are tenured in the Chicana/Chicano Studies Department now?
Full-time, eight out of the 10.
Eight out of the 10 are tenured. That wasn't the case five years ago. That was not the case 10 years ago. And anybody who knows about university life knows that if you're not a tenured professor, you're really not there for very long, and you really can't stabilize and you really can't build the foundation that you need to, to have the kind of curriculum that you want. So I think it's very important that we recognize not only the department, but the university for finally coming on board and becoming a full-fledged partner with this department.
Thank you. Let me ask Ms. Perry to say a few words as well.
Just wanted to take a point of personal privilege with respect to Dr. Macias and someone whom I have long admired and respect in not only his accomplishments, but his willingness to teach and to open the doors wide on not only our contemporary history, but our history even further back and our common history. Lot of times, we talk about teaching diversity. Here's an individual who's not only an academician at the top of his game, but someone who actually lives it and teaches it and breathes it, and I'm just happy, so pleased that UCLA has come to this day and that you will be there at the helm, guiding its course for generations of students to come. And congratulations to everyone. Thank you for doing this today, Tony.
With that, it gives me great pleasure to give the certificate of recognition to UCLA Department of Chicana and Chicano Studies. We pray that you continue to do wonderful work and you educate thousands and thousands of people, not just Chicanos and Chicanas, but everyone who chooses to have a diverse mind and to understand the diversity of our great country. Congratulations.
We'll go in the back and take a picture for him. Make sure you go to the side. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruelhan, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vitergos, White, Sain, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, the council is officially in session. Let's take a brief pause and presentations to dispense with our consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Now would be time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council under general public comment. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to July 8th.
Members, items 1 through 6 now before us. Do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. There's no objection. These items are continued.
Items 7 through 26 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been circulated to all members on items 10 and 13.
Members 7 through 26 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items in committee. Reports with recommendations are before us for consideration. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have requests for specials? 19 call special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Mr. Clerk, let's also hold item 13 special for the time being. On the balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 27 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 27, the Bureau of Street Lighting has requested that matter be received and filed.
Okay, without objection. Item 27 is received and filed. On items 28 through 50, colleagues, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, with the exception of item 39. We'll call item 39 special for a comment card. Public hearing is open and closed on the balance of the items. Any specials? 28 through 50? Any other specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 49, please. Items 28 through 32 are ordinances, and carry over for second readings. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 51 and 52 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and the city attorney has submitted the resolutions and ordinances, and those have been circulated to all members.
Okay, I do have a card on 51 and 52. We'll call those special and hold them on the desk. Coming back to presentations. It is after 10:30. Let's take a brief pause in the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruelhan, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vitergos, White, Sain, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, the three-item special meeting is now before us. Mr. Clerk, first items, please.
Items 1 and 2 are items which public hearings have been held.
Any requests to call items 1 or 2 special from the special meeting? From the special meeting, Mr. Smith?
Two.
Item 2 called special. On item number 1 of the special meeting agenda, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is an ordinance and carries over for a second reading. Item 3 from the special meeting agenda is a closed session item. Do we need to go into closed session on that? Mr. City Attorney.
On this item, the city attorney recommends council approval of retention of counsel to defend the city's interests in Phase 1 of the Wallace trial and authorize the CAO and city attorney to select suitable trial counsel. The city attorney advises going into closed session if there are any questions.
Okay. Colleagues, are there going to be questions or discussion on this matter? If not, we can move forward with the vote of the city attorney recommendation. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11.
Okay, that is approved. Let's continue. Item 2 from the special meeting back to the regular meeting, and at this time adjourn the special meeting. Return to presentations. For our next presentation, Mr. Sain.
Mr. Padilla, can we go fourth with on 25, forward on the regular agenda?
Fourth with on 25. Mr. Sain?
Thank you, Ms. President. I have three presentations, and I'll begin with a future ambassador for the world. Nicholas Marceco. Nicholas, come on up here, please, and bring your mom and dad with you, and your aunt. Bring the whole family up. What little Nicholas did is a little amazing, isn't it? All right, don't be shy. You're amongst friends here at City Hall. Your mom and dad pay a lot of taxes, and you get to benefit from that today. What little Nicholas did, he lives in Woodland Hills. He's here with his parents, Tony and Valerie.
His aunt.
And his aunt.
Adrian.
Adrian, Aunt Adrian. Eight years old, second-grade student at Chaparral Elementary. And Nicholas heard about the tsunami and the damage and all the people that were affected. So Nicholas set up his own website called Operation Hurt, which stands for Hearts United Rallyed Together, the great American Beanie Baby Roundup to Aid Surviving Children in Southeast Asia as a result of the tsunami. His website advertised his mission to aid children in Southeast Asia and asked people who are interested to please send their donations. Through Operation Hurt, Nicholas collected more than 1,300, it's now 14-something, right? 14 what?
14, I think it was 1,426.
Beanie Babies that were sent to surviving children in Southeast Asia affected by the tsunami. And since finding a way to reach children in orphanages in Southeast Asia was difficult, Nicholas got in touch with I-58, a nonprofit organization that specializes in providing direct support to the suffering children of the world, and entrusted them to deliver the Beanie Babies. And Nicholas is another example, and we had another young person here a few days ago, another example of a young person who can make a difference to make life better for those that suffer tragedies. So Nicholas, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles, we have a certificate for you, recognizing you and congratulating you on your unwavering commitment to helping those in need. You are a living example of how people can change the world simply by caring. Thank you for improving the quality of life and for making the city of Los Angeles a better place in which to live, work, and play. Nicholas, this is for you, for what you did all by yourself. And now, we're going to give you the microphone. You heard the previous presentations, and the people spoke. Well, now it's your turn. You're on television, and now you're going to speak. Okay? And mom and dad and aunt are right here to protect you. There you go.
First, I want to say thank you to my parents and Atlas Homewares for shipping the Beanie Babies, and Stephanie Bean, and I- Babies, and Stephanie Bean, and I-58 Projects, and the Coles Kids Who Care Society. And we sent the Beanie Babies to five orphanages, orphanages, in Sri Lanka, Malaysia, and India. And that's all I'd like to say. And thank you, Councilman Sain.
Nicholas, you're welcome, and thank you. And thank you for your mom and dad for being great examples and your aunt, bringing examples. And look, we got some high schoolers coming up right behind you, so stick around. We're going to do some photos, so you can go back and sit down, and then we'll do some photos once we get done with the next two presentations. And the next presentation is going to come from the San Fernando Valley once again, from the Woodland Hills area. We have the El Camino High School Varsity Baseball Team. If you please come forward. Come on, gentlemen. And the coach. Where's the coaches? Josh, Matt, Billy, Mike? Are you with the coaches? Well, come on up here, coaches. Where are you? We need to get the coaches up front. Morning. Good morning. El Camino makes a lot of appearances here at City Council, the decathlon winners and all the other wonderful achievements at El Camino High School over in Woodland Hills. And today, we're congratulating El Camino for living up to their name. The conquerors, the conquistadors. El Camino baseball team won the 2005 City Section Championship by defending the two-time, by defeating the two-time defending national champions, Chatsworth Chancellors, 5 to 1 on May 28th at Dodger Stadium. The team never lost a game at Dodger Stadium. I wish the Dodgers could say that. This is El Camino's fourth citywide baseball championship overall, and they have all been won over their West Valley League rivals, the Chancellors of Chatsworth, which is Councilman and Great Smith's area. Eric Pitas selected the most valuable player of the championship game, struck out 20 of the last 22 batters he faced, completely dominating Chatsworth after giving up home runs in the top of the first inning. Sean Court was named CIF Los Angeles City Player of the Year. Sean, where are you? Thank you. And Eric, where's Eric? Don't be shy. You're on television there, guys. And then the catcher. Where's Sammy? Don Obedian?
Don Obedian.
Don Obedian, Dad, you're so short, get up here. They can't see you behind those guys. You're not the quarterback. There you go. Obedian, Sean, he's the catcher. He exclaimed, "It's a dream come true." Something you can't really even explain. It seems that El Camino Real baseball has no explaining to do. They are the champions, and we applaud their accomplishments. And congratulations to the head coach, Matt Lecour. Where's Matt? There's Matt. Billy and Mike Ramirez, you guys brothers?
Yeah.
All right.
He's not here.
He's not here. And you've overcome difficulties and truly made the El Camino tradition continue. We've got a number of the players here, and we're going to have the coach speak first, and then each player can come up and say their name, get on camera, and we'll congratulate you once again. Decathlon, softball, baseball, soccer, football, you name it. And I know that we participated in a recent activity with the El Camino football team, helping children who are disabled. So it's a wonderful opportunity to come and congratulate. We've got certificates for each every player and the coaches, so, Coach, over to you.
I'd like to thank Councilman Sain, first of all, for having us down here. It's a special opportunity for our guys to be down here and see some of the faces they see on TV every night. It's truly a proud, proud year for our school, our community. These kids, they work very hard, all of our teams at our school do. And for them to come through the way they did this year, not just by winning, but really becoming better people, is a great accomplishment, and many of our seniors are ready to go on and either continue playing baseball, but the best part of it is I think every one of our seniors is going on to college next year. And that kind of tells you a little bit about our school, our community. Sometimes LA Unified doesn't get the best press in the world, but there is some really great schools out there, and we think that El Camino Real is definitely one of them. So I'm going to let the kids come up here and say their name and...
Then we're going to file off to the left.
Sean Court.
Kevin Zacco.
J.P. Hollywood.
Wyatt Eastman.
Sammy Don Obedian.
Say it again, they couldn't hear you. Come on back here.
Sammy Don Obedian.
There you go.
Aaron Breslow.
A.J. Humine.
Eric Pettis.
Mike Callahan.
Adam Don Obedian.
Casey Green.
Mark Beranian.
Ryan LeVarnewe.
Tyler Kaladny.
Ryan Onesto.
Zach Kaplan.
Brendan Toby Hansen.
Brett Bosick.
Garrett Claypool.
Dominic Deanna.
David Beg.
Coach Billy Ramirez.
And I'm Coach Matt Lecour.
Thank you. Let's hear it for the El Camino, the baseball. And we're going to join them shortly for the photos. We now have the other portion of El Camino, the girls varsity softball, if please come forward. 2005 City Section Champs. El Camino keeps taking those titles away from us. Coach Lori Chandler, assistant coach Bob Fisher, assistant coach Jody Bornstein. Are the coaches here? The coaches are here. The softball team, El Camino Real High Softball Team, 2005 City Section Champions. They won the 2005 City Section Championship by defeating, Janice Hahn, if she was here, she'd be screaming, San Pedro, breaking a 12 to 12 tie for the all-around record of 113, 13 games won. Second title in less than a week for El Camino Real, with the baseball team also winning their championship game. El Camino also won the academic decathlon this year. They are a real triple threat to all the schools. To quote the Daily News editorial, "El Camino Real High School is clearly doing something right." This is the sixth time a school has won baseball and softball titles in the same year. El Camino was the only school to do it more than once, winning both titles in 2005, 1997, and 1994. And the pitcher, Megan Miller, where's Megan?
She's not here.
She's not here? She's still pitching. Was nearly as dominant as baseball pitcher Eric Pitas was for the baseball team, giving up only two hits, both infield singles, and struck out five. Congratulations to the team coach, Lori Chandler, and her assistant, Bob Fisher, and Jody Bornstein, as well as the team for a well-deserved victory. Congratulations, and we'll hear from the coach.
I'd like to thank Councilman Sain and members of the council. Just to iterate what Matt said, we're very honored to be working and representing El Camino High School. It's a fine school in the valley, and our softball program has had a huge tradition of athletics and academics working together, and we're just honored to be here, and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. And Grill, if you'll please come up and introduce yourself to the audience.
I'm Darren Rose.
Francesca Nea.
Kaitlin Baca.
Chastelene Eddy.
Wait, Kaitlin Baca, you related to the sheriff? Sheriff Baca? All right, okay. Want to make sure.
Daria Iglov.
Catherine Wright.
Kelly Oswald.
Kaitlin Healy.
Kelly Kaplan.
Coach Jody Bornstein.
Coach Bob Fisher.
And Coach Lori Chandler.
Great, great. Let's hear it again for the El Camino softball. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sain, for our next presentation, and we recognize Mr. Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President, and thank you very much. We have someone who's part of the government, you know, there's the four levels, and the fourth estate is the press corps. I want to stand behind your colleague right here, do what we do every day, like champions. But this morning, unfortunately, because I think she's one of the nicest people in our City Hall, Erin Park is leaving the City News Service to go on to take a new role with the Los Angeles Daily Journal, the legal paper. So I know our city attorneys and others will be reading that. But Erin has, for three years, has been involved with the City News Service down here and started off as an assistant to the desk that handles all the budget programming, but she has been our key, because without the City News Service, we can't do the job of getting out the information to the people. So I thought it was appropriate that we give her this great certificate of the great city of Los Angeles, for your hard work and dedication reporting the news to the people of Los Angeles. And I wish you well in all your future endeavors, and I'm going to ask the dean of the press corps to speak. Dave Sain, how's there to speak first, if you would, because Rick Orloff is not here. So, you know, the great thing, actors, actors are great, and writers and newspaper people are great. Ask them a question, it's a different story. Dave, say something nice about Erin.
I just want to say I've been ambushed because Rick Orloff isn't here. But I will say this. Erin does the kind of work that is the lifeblood for every other reporter, because she tells you when things are going on, and that is not to be underestimated. And every politician and every reporter needs City News Service, and Erin did a great job, and we're going to miss her a lot. And we're all very fond of her.
And also, thank you very much, Jessica Garrison, who is, I want to say a few words, if you would please, a great reporter from the great Los Angeles Times.
Well, I just, I don't know if you have any idea how often you've saved my little self. And I think you have the hardest job here, and you do, you did it incredibly well, and you're a beautiful writer, and I'll miss you.
Well, thank you very much. And I know Jane Galbraith, and I'm sure all the press deputies for council appreciate Erin Park. So Erin, good luck, and I'm proud that you're in my district. You called me in. Any problems? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. For our next presentation, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council, general public. A few weeks ago, we honored a competition of town criers here. Well, it's true that there's no way like the old way. We have our own contemporary town criers nestled right here in our own information technology agency with Channel 35, which hosts this, council and commission meetings, covers special events, and lets Los Angeles subscribers know who we are and just what is the work we do. And they do an excellent job of it. It's kind of become a cliche around here that we keep every six months or a year honoring some of the awards that they win, but it's a real privilege and honor to celebrate again another award, another plaid given to Channel 35. The California Nevada Regional Chapter of NATOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, recently awarded its ninth annual STAR Awards for Excellence in Government Programming. L.A. City View Channel 35 was honored with seven awards for, first, L.A. This Week, which won first place for a news category; two, council meeting coverage, first place for public meeting category; and while there's great technical support, I'd like to think it's probably some of the great speeches that are given here. Third, the Fire Department, the BALL Safety Campaign, which features Eric Estrada and Isai Morales, first place for PSA category. We always love having Eric Estrada on Channel 35. First place for PSA category, women with AIDS, and second, which won second place, sorry, for a documentary category. And I know many of us were part of that program in here in council chambers, raising awareness about the effect of AIDS and HIV on women in Los Angeles. Traffic Safety Campaign won a second place for the PSA category. Sometimes we, I guess we were competing against ourselves, and we got first and second place. We got second place for Bulletin Board category with the Community Bulletin Board, which scrolls in between our programs all the time on Channel 35. And Overall Excellence won a third-place award. So this is in the midst of grappling with budget cuts. L.A. City View Channel 35 accomplished this and continues to garner the respect and the acknowledgements of its peers and industry professionals. So I'd like to award this. We have both Tony Agani, who runs the channel, and also Thera Bradshaw, our general manager. I'd like to congratulate them. This has been signed by all of us, and the mayor, and our city attorney, and also our city clerk. Congratulations to all of the hard workers of Channel 35. Thanks to the other parts of the city family, from Fire Department and others, who are innovative and who thought through using the power of that government channel to be able to inform and to affect change. These awards really go to each one of us that were part of that, but congratulations today, and if you'll join me in giving them a round of applause for their awards.
Thank you very much.
And we have a, we have a clip, I believe, that we're going to cue.
Roll the tape.
Roll tape.
My name is Terry Austin. I'm president of the Amanda Foundation, and the Amanda Foundation is the city's largest dog and cat rescue, and we currently run the city's Spain Neuter program, the mobile van. And I'll...
In L.A. This Week.
Learning about environmental hazards with Green Team L.A. I'm Cheryl Khan, and I'll have that story coming up.
Do you know how to cross the street correctly? You may think you do, but officials say many people are doing it wrong. How to do it right, ahead.
I'm Anna Marcos. We'll show you the LAPD underwater dive team's newest prized possession and what it can do for underwater searches, coming up.
Welcome to L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Daryl Hutt.
Hey, buddy! Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire! Like the one behind me!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
I'll be there soon.
It's better to lose one minute of your life than your life in one minute.
There are moments in people's lives that can change them forever. For these women, the biggest life-changing moment by far was when they got the news they thought they'd never hear.
They said, "Well, your HIV results came back positive." And I felt like my belly just dropped to the floor, and it was devastating.
She said, "Well, your test came back positive." I said, "What kind of test?" She said, "HIV-positive test." And I just bust out and started to cry.
Channel 35 is really a precious gem, and the staff led by Tony Agani, the station manager, really deserves a lot of credit, along with our partners. The great thing that we get to do is show you at work, government at work, and partner in some fun projects like the BALL with the Fire Department and the others that are here. Tony will introduce our partners that were, that really this is the result of all of their efforts together. Congratulations to everyone who was involved in this. I hope to be back soon because we're up for some more Emmys. So you'll, you will be seeing, and maybe even one of these will actually win the Emmy. Tony?
Thank you, Thera. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. You know, producing an award-winning program is truly a collaborative process, so I'd absolutely have to thank the entire staff of Channel 35 and the production team that work day in and day out to produce these wonderful shows. The seven winning entries that you saw, a little bit of clip, they're all wonderful programs, but I do want to highlight two in particular. Of course, council presentation also last year won the national award. So as Councilman Garcetti said, it's, I'm sure, a group participation of all, everyone that comes before. that comes before this councilman presents. But the folks that are responsible that you probably don't see are behind the control room. And I don't know if, Dave, you can move the camera and acknowledge yourselves up there. Dave Brown, Camilo Chilcot, and there you go. And Francisco Montano. And equally as important, we have our council audio, which you all always see here, Russ Bellinott, Ken Moody, Steve Toby and Frank Avolarti. We were particularly fortunate in this round of competition because we have some wonderful partners and departments who are here representing those departments. We have Ralph Tesaris from Fire Department, which produced the Ball campaign. Currently, we have five episodes or five PSAs running, not only on Channel 35, but also distributed to other stations for wider exposure. We have Ken Huston representing the Department of Transportation for the Watch the Road campaign. We've got four spots so far produced, also being aired in other stations as well. And we have Steven Simon of the Office of the AIDS Coordinator that won the award for Women Alive, Living with AIDS, which has already shown on KCET. So I want to thank their help and cooperation and then participation. And finally, I want to acknowledge the multi-talented producers behind these projects, Daryl Hood for, and his news team for L.A. This Week, which is the weekly show that you all see. We also have Cheryl Khan that produced the Women Alive documentary. And Robert Mancero, one of our veteran producers who is multi-Emmy winner, who we're very, we're very lucky to have him on our production crew. And it's wonderful to be recognized by your peers in the industry, but you know, it's equally as special to have the support and recognition of the, of the city family. So thank you, Councilman Garcetti and members of the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Before you leave, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti, everybody from I T A, Ms. Bradshaw, Tony, Steve, everybody. You make, you know, it's so important what you do that inspires someone in our communities to do something. So it completes the circle. So thank you 35, 35,000 times. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Labange.
Thank you.
For our final presentation, let me recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to lunch. How are you?
We're going to see you next week on the emergency office.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask a person that really is a living legend in the boxing industry and also in law enforcement in the state of California, Mr. Robert Byrd, to come up with me. We're here to honor Robert Byrd for several things. He has just recently been inducted in the California Boxing Hall of Fame as of March of 2005. He, his career in boxing began while serving the United States Marine Corps between 1960 and 64, where he boxed for the First Marine Division, where he won the 139-pound championship. He was honorably discharged from the military and he started his career with the California State Police, which is the oldest formal police department in the state of California, and he joined in 1966. He also participated in the California Police Olympics for five years, where he won four medals. He retired from competition in 1980 and then was recruited to become a member of the California State Athletic Commission as a boxing referee, where he began officiating that same year. He's refereed some of the most outstanding fights in boxing history. In 1988, he refereed the Lockridge-Tony Lopez fight, which is in California. The third highest grossing fight in California was also Lopez and Paez. One of our local heroes, he refereed his first fight, Shane Mosley. Also, the first professional fight in 50 years in China, he also refereed that in 1993. He refereed the first fight ever at the Rose Bowl, the Jeff Finnick's last fight, the Felix Trinidad fight, in which he won the welterweight title. He also officiated the first show on HBO Boxing After Dark. That fight was McKinney versus Barrera. He's a licensed boxing official of the state of California for 21 years, been a member of the World Police Fire Games, the California Police Boxing Officiating Crew for 18 years. He's officiated over 71 world title fights, in addition to numerous minor titles and main events, and he's officiated bouts in 11 countries and seven states. He's conducted seminars and officiating in two major boxing associations. He also has had an outstanding career as a California State Police Officer, in which he worked his way up the ranks in every aspect of the department, including patrol, investigations, the training, dignitary protection. He also served as Crime Prevention Coordinator for the Southern California from 77 to 83, a program he was instrumental in developing during the course of his assignment as he trained over 30,000 officers in crime prevention. In 85, he promoted to the rank of commander of the California State Police and through promotion became the first African-American ever to be promoted above the rank of lieutenant in the 98-year history of the State Police. He served as a commander for the California State Police, South State and Central Coast Commands, and subsequently, that department was merged with the California Highway Patrol in 1995. He was assigned the rank of captain commander, served administrative captain in the California Highway Patrol until he retired in 2000. He grew up in Chicago, Illinois, graduated from Dunbar Vocational High School, where he's a two-sports letterman, a member of the band and also the Civic Air Patrol. He's graduated FBI National Academy, the Executive Development Course, the CHP Course, was a member of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement, and also awarded their Nobel Achievers Award in February 2000. In 1981, he was a recipient of the California State Athletic Commission Joe Louis Humanitarian Award. In 2001, he was recognized as Boxing Illustrated in Ring Magazine as one of the top 10 referees in the world. And in 2003, he was recognized by the World Boxing Hall of Fame for his contribution. We're honoring him today because he has created a legacy in two professions, sometimes simultaneously. Many of you, if you're fight fans, may recognize him from a variety of major fights and as we grow older, we even see him now on the classic fights. And so he dominates in that area of dealing with a sport that sometimes is not viewed in a positive light, but certainly he is a positive star in that arena. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Robert Byrd to come up. And Noel, if you bring me that certificate, I can complete my task.
So, behalf of the L.A. City Council, we just want to say thank you for your service for the state of California, both as a law enforcement officer and as a referee in a very tough sport.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, as Henry VIII told his wives, I won't keep you long. But I'm thankful to Councilman Parks and the Los Angeles City Council for this award today. We go a long way back, all the way back to when he was sergeant. I have considered him and still consider him a mentor, an inspiration and a friend. And I think that the city of Los Angeles is, is well, the city of Los Angeles is blessed to have him on its staff. Thank you again. Hope I'll see some of you folks up in Nevada. That's where I'm at now.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. I believe this concludes the presentations for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
And I believe his questions have been answered on this item. Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, I wanted to point out that we have the Domestic Violence Task Force here today, who's very much in support of this, and I want to thank Ms. Misakowski, whose desk I'm speaking from right now, for her leadership in making sure that we push forward colleagues with a citywide system of domestic abuse response teams, which are so important for, from a fiscal perspective, making sure that we don't have repeat calls in the same homes and apartments where domestic abuse occurs, but more importantly, from a moral standpoint, to make sure that we do all we can to find funds and we're working very closely with our federal counterparts. Barbara Boxer has been a strong supporter as we've had cuts in the domestic abuse response teams, these civilian teams which roll out with our police on domestic violence calls. Now, as we look at building a citywide system, I know LAPD is looking at making sure that we have standards that will be uniform across the city while allowing community-based organizations to continue the work that they've been doing. Thank you again for in the budget. This council passed $500,000 additional money to restore a couple of DART teams that had been lost. And now, as we look forward into the coming year, let us all redouble our efforts to see that every single division in this city, every police division, has the resources they need to make sure that these teams can go hand in hand with our police officers. They complement our police officers. Our police officers like them because it allows them to extricate some of these individuals from these situations permanently and to move on and get better lives than the ones that they're sometimes stuck in. So thank you for all the hard work, Domestic Violence Task Force. If we'll give them a round of applause, they're all standing right now. Thank you. And I urge your support today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Are the members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 19. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item two from the special meeting was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith. Item two from the special agenda.
Oh, I just wanted to, I think this is important to note that we have finally taken the steps that we initiated last year with the motion I brought forward, and Mr. Cardenas seconded, to get Water and Power to go through a public process. I think it's a very important step we're taking here today, and I thank the committee for the action they've taken to move this along. But I also wanted, we need to be on record and saying to Water and Power that they have a time certain they want this to take effect, that our process has to take place first. And there's some real-time issues involved here. They need to be aware of that, that if they want to get it done, they need to be moving out very quickly with their RFP, which we've done. They need to also be moving out there with the public meetings with the neighborhood councils to get that to the council by the end of the year so they can get it in effect by January. And if we don't, I think we need to say very clearly to D W P, January is not the date you're going to start on this then if we have not finished that process. Because we very clearly, as council said, we want this process to take force. I think, Mr. Cardenas, for hearing this committee, and I just wanted for the record for those that are watching, that this is finally, the council taking those strong actions we said we'd take last year to bring about fiscal constraints at Water and Power and to guarantee that the rate increases that they bring forward are truly what is needed and that the public is involved in the process for a change rather than the closed doors of Water and Power. So I wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to know if Mr. Deaton, who heads our Department of Water and Power, if he can come front and center, please, and grab one of those microphones. If you haven't been here before, sir, you need to state your name for the record before you speak.
Ron Deaton, general manager, Department of Water and Power.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to clarify for the public, the Commerce Committee wasn't televised and we're going to cover some of this now in the General Assembly Committee of this council. And just point out, as Mr. Smith just pointed out, we are going to be involving the community and educating them more about what the Department of Water and Power's responsibilities are and the fact that the rate payers are the ones who actually pay the fees so that we can actually run the department. Now, in this particular case, just recently and every year, the Department of Water and Power actually states what their future is over the next one, two, three, four, five years, and you've identified the fact that there may be a shortfall in revenue if you're going to continue to do all the things that you're responsible for doing. That being the case, first of all, have you voted a rate increase at the department yet?
No.
Secondly, okay, the answer's no. Secondly, what process are we going to use and is this process, has this process been used in the past in educating the public and arriving at a point where a vote actually can be taken by the board and then eventually the city council on a rate increase?
The Water and Power Commissions will consider next year's budget at their next meeting next Tuesday. At that point, they will, I'm assuming, will confirm our need for the additional revenue. Subsequent to that, actually, a couple of things will be happening. One is the process that you're voting on today, which is a review of that material and having
Who, excuse me, who would be reviewing that material? You yourself, your department?
No. We have, we have done our review and we have put our, our best effort forward at this point. Now, the C A O and the C L A will select and not with the input of the Department of Water and Power, a third-party consultant to review with expertise in utilities and expertise on financial matters to review our numbers, in essence.
So basically, the C A O and the C L A do not work for the Department of Water and Power, correct?
No.
And they are going to be in charge of deciding who is going to review your documents and then give an opinion, a public opinion, that will disseminate to the public and throughout the city on what their opinion is of your idea of needing a rate increase, correct?
That's correct.
And who's going to pay for that? You don't pick them. The department doesn't pick it, but who's going to pay for it?
Will pay for that.
The department will pay for it. They'll pick up the tab for that independent review, but it's going to be the C L A and the C A O who do not work for the Department of Water and Power who are going to decide who that's going to be. And we clarified in committee, it's very likely going to be an accounting firm, some kind of firm of that nature who has the expertise of reviewing those kinds of documents.
That's correct. And then simultaneous with that, we will be putting together a, the, the structure, if you will, of a rate increase. In other words, there's two issues relative to any rate increase. One is the, the size of it and the amount of money that it would raise, and that's going to be reviewed by the third party. And also, the structure of how that is, how that revenue increase is spread throughout the various customer classes and based on consumption, et cetera. We'll be working on that. And what our agreement with the, our memorandum of understanding with the neighborhood councils and in general, the public is that the 90 days before our commission acts on a rate increase, the neighborhood councils will be notified. That hasn't been triggered yet, one. Two, because this is the first year that we've implemented this particular third-party arrangement and also the memorandum of understanding, the 90 days may or may not be sufficient. So we're going to have to, to work on exactly when those dates are. And our objective is January, but the world won't come to an end if it's, if it's a few days later, so.
Okay. Now, one of the things that I wanted to clarify, this independent review, are you going to have any community meetings before the independent review is done? And then, once the independent review is done, how many meetings or what, what portion of the meetings are going to occur before that independent review and what portion of the meetings out there in the public are going to happen after that independent review is available?
There might be a few before, but I think that the majority of them will have to be after that study is completed because otherwise we would be, it would, there would be confusion. So I think we're going to do, we may discuss a little bit about the rate structure, we may be discussing
And answer questions.
And answering questions, explaining more about what we do and why we're doing, what we are planning on doing, some of the, the major projects involved in that, et cetera, getting some input back on that. But I think when the serious business relative to the increase in, in revenue and the subsequent potential water rate increase, that will have to be subsequent to the third party. And my, my understanding is, is that the third party would be made, consultant would be made available to answer questions as well as, as the department will be in these neighborhood councils and citizen participation process. And this is, both these, both the third party and, and the 90 days and the MOU are both brand-new. This, and so accordingly, when we worked this through with the neighborhood councils, we indicated that the first couple of years, we're going to learn about how better to do this on both sides, and this is the beginning of that process as well.
Thank you. I think it's very important that Angelenos understand that this is democracy at its best. This is something that does not have to be done or didn't have to be done in the past, but we've now opened up the process to be much more public and much more open so that the rate payers of Los Angeles understand what your job is, Ron Deaton, in running this department and making sure that we continue to have reliable water, reliable electricity, and that we continue to be the department that throughout the country, people look to as being stable, as being, doing a very good job, not a perfect job, but a very good job. But one of the things that I've But one of the things that I've shared with you, Mr. Deaton, is the Department of Water and Power does a much better, has done a much better job in the past than they have in making sure that Angelenos understand how good a job you're actually doing. So, I think this is going to be a great opportunity, not only to discuss the potential for possible rate increases at the department with all Angelenos in a very public forum over many, many meetings, but it is also going to be an opportunity for the Department of Water and Power to prove and to show what I already know, that our department is in fact doing a very darn-good job. It's not easy to be able to bring the kind of water to a city this large, to be able to turn on that tab and make sure that water comes out clean and reliable and safe. There's cities to the south of us who would love to have that opportunity. They don't have it like we do. So, thank you for opening up the process with us, and thank you for following the process.
Thank you.
Before you go too far away, Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ron, I just need to just clarify a couple of things. In reading the document, and it's a little different from, I think, what you verbally stated, it appears that when we look at item one, it says the general manager submits a letter proposing the increase. It appears that the commission has no role or they have no consultation, and I'd just like to get some idea to clarify that.
I looked with interest at that as well. And since the hiring and firing of general managers is done by the Water and Power Commission, I have every reason to believe that my letter will go to the commission and that the commission will be involved and that they will initiate the notification to the neighborhood councils. That'll probably happen in July. That will not be the notification to proceed with the 90 days. It will be the notification we're going to begin the discussion.
Okay. And then, the issue of, when it comes back on the draft, it appears that it goes directly to the general manager, again, without the commission involvement. I would assume that's not, okay, that's not likely to happen. Not likely, okay. And then, one of the things on item eight, it shows that once it comes back, there's comments going forward as, which doesn't appear that if it's disagreement with the or raising rates, that it will continue through the process. It doesn't seem like there's two options. It appears it's going to come forward regardless of what the study shows or what your letter says if you're not in agreement with any rate increase. Because basically, number eight said, once you've responded, the original contract, the general manager's response, will be distributed to the mayor and council going through the process as though it's a foregone conclusion that a rate increase is going to be approved.
Well, I think that the, and we'll have to see the reasons for any dispute if, ultimately, the responsibility for making sure that the water system, the power system is funded is the mayor and the city councils. And we have to go through that process. Obviously, if a third-party review indicates, in their opinion, we, we don't need the money, it's going to be more difficult to convince anybody that we need that money. So, I think the, I mean, there can be a dispute, but I don't, I would anticipate that they will work through those, and there'll be more of a consensus than that might lead you to believe.
Okay. Appreciate it. And I would, I think your comments are what I thought was going to happen, but it just seems so real definitive in the wording as though the commission was left out and it was just going by rote. And so, based on your clarification, I guess we can go forward.
No, I, I would, in my new role, I'm as inclusive with the commission as I was the council when I was in another role.
Oh, I have another question.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. Deaton.
Councilmember Zine.
You were at the education neighborhoods a couple of days ago?
Yes, I was.
And they were going to fry you, but they decided to praise you.
I think the statement was that they would like nothing better, but they had no reason to.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, that an article was published, apparently misquoted, misstated, erroneous, et cetera, and set off a lot of alarms. And neighborhood council representatives came down to the committee meeting, and they were very supportive of you, your department, and what you were doing with the process, the cooperative effort. I just want to make sure that was put on the record, that everything you'd promised to do, you were doing, and all the alarms that were set off was because, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was an erroneous article that generated a lot of concern, a lot of interest and potential criticism, but then, when the critics found out the truth, they were very positive in their comments about you and the Department of Water and Power and the process they're pursuing for the issue at hand.
I believe the department staff has gone with the, both the spirit and the letter, the memorandum of understanding. I think we will be, those comments, six months from now, will be as positive as they were last week.
I do appreciate that. Just want to make sure that was on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Are there members with questions, comments? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. That is item two from the special meeting agenda. Our next items, colleagues, are 39, 51, and 52. We consider them concurrently for purposes of public comment and call forward Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. This is 39, 51, and 52 together.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. I will start this evening on number 51. I would say no on number 51. Before submitting by our city attorney, this special election must be stopped of adding a new committee board, a half-cent increase of taxes for more police officers, drains and sewer line change-up, no on inheritance money, hiring inside of firms and not hiring the public has not worked it for schools or businesses, no on redistricting maps, no on these different governments' retirement plans, broke here or overseas. Finally, we must say no since after government, Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger has stolen and taken all money from schools, businesses, and firms and back to Asia area to come back here to start over with our trade center money to pay bills with Jewish money only. He is in anger since United States of America has destroyed their Italian government here and overseas. Now, there is only one government here, then two since September 11th, Tuesday, at 9:00 AM--
Can I ask you to conclude?
--in New York.
If you can conclude, please.
I'm almost finished. I'm going on number 52. On number 52, again, this special election must be stopped at this time of the same date start. No because of these councilments of District Number 10 and 14, Councilman Mark LeLoe and Councilman Antonio Varakas. It's not yet completed their taxes.
Thank you.
Time has begun and given to each councilman and Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger that are not completed and given their financial budget report to our mayor, James Hine.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on--
Number 39, sir.
That's it. Your time is up.
I have two minutes.
This concludes public comment for items 39, 51, and 52. Members of the council wish to be heard on these items. Actually, what we also have called special is item 13. Let's open the roll only on item 39 at this time.
39, we'd like to have referred back to public safety. It's unknown as to what the cost of those beef permit fees are. And so, the committee at Public Works and Budget should review that.
Okay. Without objection, that item is so referred, leaving out of 51, 52. Item 13 is also on the desk, colleagues, for purposes of allowing Mr. Ledlow to recuse himself. So, Mr. Ledlow, if you don't mind stepping out of chambers, actually, I think he's already done so. Let the roster reflect, Mr. Ledlow is absent. Any questions or comments on items 51, 52, or 13? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Item 13 is approved. Items 51 and 52 include ordinances that carry over for second readings. Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, could we have a reconsideration of number 23? We have to add an amending sentence to that issue.
Okay. Let's open the roll, reconsideration of item 23. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is so, is reconsidered, called special by Mr. Parks for an amending motion.
I just want to add language. It's an amending motion to oppose using general, state general fund money to complete the toll bridge seismic retrofit program. This is something that goes hand-in-hand with the city's position opposing SB 1024.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Yet again, is item 13 still on the desk? Okay, 13 is done. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, special one has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, June 15th, Christine Chiangson was fatally wounded by a stray bullet while standing at the takeout window of a restaurant. The police department has requested immediate council approval of a reward offer so that evidence leads could develop more quickly to protect the health and safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please, or, excuse me, that brings the item before us now, on the motion itself. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We would ask that, in support of the LAPD 77th detectives, that a $50,000 reward motion be initiated in hopes of finding information on the suspects that caused the death of Christine Estrella T. Anson. She, 20, she's a 20-year-old resident of the 8th District, a employee in the downtown garment district, merely at the corner of 73rd and Vermont, attempting to order food and appeared to be hit with a stray bullet from another incident in the near vicinity. We'd asked also that anyone that has information on this issue, contact the LAPD 77th homicide at 213-485-1385, and that's Detective Williams.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on the motion itself. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And now, we contend that item forthwith. Next item, please.
Special two has been circulated, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the police department has requested immediate council approval of a reward offer for information leading to the arrest and conviction of suspects responsible for the shooting of Maria Carmen Arredondo on May 30th. The purpose of the reward is to protect the health and safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Members wishing to speak on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special two now before us, on the motion itself. If there's no comments, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith as well. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 AM on Tuesday, June 21st for city business. A motion is required.
How are we on attendance for the 21st, Mr. Clerk?
21st, we, you have three members excused and one leaving early.
Okay.
That's including Mrs. Hahn's excuse.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas moves. Ms. Hahn is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Sunday in Griffith Park at Symphony in the Glen, we'll give a free concert in the old zoo area in the heart of Griffith Park near the merry-go-round. It's a Father's Day concert to celebrate Father's Day, and they'll have Bach and Mozart. It's a wonderful event, so if anyone would like to come, they're welcome to come and to the central part of Griffith Park for the symphony and the great free orchestra that plays on Father's Day this weekend. Also, I'd like to invite anybody on the 21st of June to hike to the greatest spot in Los Angeles, to Mount Hollywood, 360-degree view of the great city of Los Angeles as we celebrate the first day of summer coming up Tuesday in Griffith Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Cardenas.
Council President, thank you. Tomorrow, Saturday, June 18th, at Branford Recreation Center at 13310 Branford Street, Arlita, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we're having an emergency preparedness fair, and we've labeled it Prepare to Survive. For those of you who felt the earthquakes recently, look around your home and see if you have an earthquake preparedness kit or some kind of preparedness kit, and if you don't, you need to show up tomorrow because we're going to be giving out 300 free emergency kits to the first 300 families who come. You don't have to bring your entire family, but what we mean by that is if a husband and wife comes, we're going to give one to you, to both of you, for your household instead of giving one to each of you, so we can at least have them in 300 households throughout the community. So, once again, at Branford Recreation Center, 13310, in Arlita, excuse me, Branford Street in Arlita, just off of Arlita Street, is the 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the emergency preparedness fair where we will be teaching you and training you with some professionals, from firefighters and many other professionals who can teach you about all of these ways in which you can help yourself and your neighbors in case of emergency. And also, the first 300 families who come or get representation there, we're going to give you a emergency preparedness kit. We look forward to seeing you all there, and welcome all.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three announcements on activities in La Merde Park this weekend. There'll be three celebrations of, Juneteenth celebrations in La Merde Park on Sunday, June 19th. That is a celebration of African-American freedom that deals with the Civil War and late notice as to the ending of slavery. Also, on Saturday, the summer musical programs each Saturday afternoon in La Merde Park, and then the farmer's market is each Sunday in La Merde Park, rain or shine.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements? Mr. Labange? Anything going on at the zoo this weekend?
Great thinking, you're very nice. I didn't want to do all news all the time and all Griffith Park all the time, but two things. First and foremost, the Pacific Asian Volunteer Association will lead a great cleanup in the greater Griffith Park area. We'll have thousands of Korean-Americans joining us to clean up the Bird Sanctuary, Vermont Canyon, Dante's View, Captain's Roost, Mount Hollywood area. But also, that evening, the Beastly Ball, the 30th anniversary, I believe, of the Beastly Ball, one of the great events. Hope those of you can attend, can attend. It's a wonderful new entrance to the zoo, which has been completed, and our new sea lion exhibit, which will be ready. So, I want to thank you for that. There's a lot happening in the fourth that we share with the whole great city and county and state of California. So, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. President.
Absolutely. If there's no further announcements, do we have adjourning motions today? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, members, I think it'd be appropriate to adjourn in memory of Lorna Thayer, 85 years old, who was an actress in our town. She died early June in Woodland Hills at the home for actors, Woodland Hills at the Television Retirement Home, battling Alzheimer's for five years. But you'll remember Lorna from her most classic scene in her 40-year career as the waitress in Five Easy Pieces, who made that classic line. And I thought it would be appropriate, she had many, many grandchildren, which was so nice, of her three daughters, of which she had five grandchildren and six great-grandchildren, and her sister Anne as well. She was loved by many, but she's also going to be remembered for time and time for the classic scene in Five Easy Pieces with the line of, "Do you see that sign?" And chicken salad sandwich. So, Lorna Thayer.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a adjourning motion, ask that we adjourn in memory of Christine Estrella Thiansson, victim of a fatal shooting at 73rd and Vermont on June 15th. She succumbed to those wounds on June 16th. She was born August 15th, 1984. She survived--
She survived by her mother.
Other final tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.